Welcome to our meeting. The date is October 28, 2025. The time is 7:00 PM. This is an open meeting of the Grand Island City Council. The city of Grand Island abides by the Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is displayed in the back of this room as required by state law. The city council may vote to go into closed session on any agenda item as allowed by state law. I ask that you stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The city clerk will now do roll call.
Council President Sheard.
President.
Councilmember Stelk.
Present.
Councilmember Conley.
Present.
Councilmember Nickerson.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Hossi.
Present.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Present.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Present.
Councilmember Pollak will be absent. Councilmember Lanfair.
Present.
And Mayor Steele.
Present.
Also present are Jill Grenier, the city clerk, Stacy Nonhoff, the Assistant City Attorney, and Keith Kurtz, the Public Works Director. Individuals who have appropriate items for city council consideration should complete the request for future agenda items form located at the information booth. If the issue can be handled administratively without council action, notification will be provided. If the item is scheduled for a meeting or study session, notification of the date will be given. Removed from tonight's consent agenda are 6E, 6I, 6R, and 6S. Council members, are there any other consent agenda items that you would like removed? Hearing none, we shall continue. A sign-up sheet was available in the lobby for individuals wishing to provide input on any of tonight's agenda items. If you did not sign up to speak on an agenda item, please come forward, state your name and the agenda topic on which you will be speaking. No one has come forward, so we shall continue. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items 6E, 6I, 6R, and 6S? Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I move that we pass the consent agenda items 6A through P and no 6E, 6I, 6R, 6S.
Mr. O'Neil.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Motion adopted.
Leading off with 6E, approving of memorandum of understanding between the city of Grand Island and the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number 647. Mr. Schmidt, please present on this.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The memorandum of understanding before you tonight is regarding a schedule change. So, we currently have a contract in effect through September 30th of 2026 that uses a one-day-on, two-day-off schedule, so 24 on, 48 off. The proposed MOU in front of you would be a schedule change to 48 on, 96 off, so two days on, four days off. And both parties were interested in this model. It's been used fairly widely at other municipalities, fire stations, and they've seen some benefits of it. So what we're proposing tonight would be a trial basis to see how it would function in Grand Island, if it's advantageous to both parties. Some things lined out in the memo talk about, you know, potential operational efficiency, improved staffing coverage, employee wellness, fatigue reduction. This would remove the Kelly Day from the schedule and the effects of recruitment and retention within the department. Union has voted on their side on this, and it was approved on their side, so it's before you tonight to determine if you want to go forward with it. There is a change, you'll notice, in the wages. So currently, they work 2,808 hours a year. That'll go to 2,912. So you keep the annual salary the same, but since there's more hours, that actually brings down the hourly rate a little bit, but the total compensation's the same. Does change the overtime schedule just a little bit. I talked about the financial impacts in there, so I'll leave that open for questions. Chief Schmidt is here for questions also, and there's a representative from the IAF here, too. Thank you.
Mr. Hossi.
I would move to approve Resolution 2025-363.
Mr. Nickerson.
I second the motion.
Mr. Hossi, discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Aaron, I'm not sure who the question is for, but... So, the concern's when I read it. Okay, so when you're going from a 24-hour shift to a 48-hour shift, the things that concern me, and I guess we did look at this 30 years ago, you know, and so I have some background on it from a long time ago. The fatigue factor was one of those, you know, if you're working 24 on and you're on calls all night long and you're asked to work the whole next day, you know, it's kind of like anybody who has been asked to fast for 48 hours. Well, it sounds like it's pretty easy, except for the second 24-hour. You know, the second 24 hours is a lot harder than the first, you know, and so I worry about the fatigue factor. I'm probably okay with the over... You know, a little more overtime in the way I see it, but the other side is the family effect, and it doesn't sound to me like it would have a positive family, you know, effect on your family, just taking one person out of your family and having them work 48-hour shifts. And, I mean, I know they're going to be home for the next four days, but that's the kind of the question. Can you help answer the fatigue factor and then the family factor?
Yeah, well, I'll speak generically, and then I'll let Zach come up, and since he'll be doing it.
Okay.
There has been studies done quite extensively, and it shows some positives to it. I think you have valid points. I think there's a... It's a trade-off one way or the other, and that's where we kind of rely on the union, too, where they took that to a vote and determined that the majority of them did want to try this. So that's really what we're leaning on. They're fully aware of what this looks like and helped draft the language, and so they know what they're getting into. And I think, you know, from now till September 30th is a good... Is a long enough period to have a real trial to see if it's beneficial or not. Of course, when we get to negotiations of the new contract, that would be a decision point of, do we want to continue with this or not? But I'll let Zach, if you don't mind, if you want to talk about the fatigue factor a little bit.
And I... One other... As long as he's coming up here, one other issue that I was concerned with is we have a hard time finding talent, as does every employer. Is there any risk of losing talent because of this change for the year? So if you could add that into your responses?
Yeah, I think that's always a potential, you know, there's some... When there's change, it's how people react to that, and I think this will, you know, we don't know until we try type, so there's no guarantee. It could be zero issues, or there could be issues. There is a clause in here that provides both sides a 30-day notice to back out of it. If we just start and things aren't going well, and both sides are like, I think we made a mistake, we can back out, too. But I'll turn it over to Zach.
So as far as the question with losing talent on that, we talked to several departments that had switched from a 24/48 to a 48/96, and a majority of them did not have any turnover during that time. Other than some of the people that were going to retire did actually retire, but other than that, they didn't see much turnover. As far as the fatigue factor, as they said, we had Kelly Days on there, so a majority of the time, we're starting the day too short, so a lot of people are already working 48, so we don't really see the effects of it with sleep fatigue, any of that. And it also helps with our recruitment. A lot of cities within the state of Texas have been switching over to this, and they've seen a positive recruitment and retention with switching schedules, because with the 24/48, when you come on shifts, you go home... I lived back out in Ogallala, where I grew up, so when I get off shift, I need to run out there, my aging parents are out there. Forty-eight or... 48 hours sometimes isn't long enough, so this will also help with that, along with commute times. Some of our members work outside of the city, they commute from the 45-mile radius, so that's less time they spend away from their families. And also, the nights at home, when we're actually off, goes from 120 to 183 days in a calendar year. So that's a benefit for family time, waking up in your own bed, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Nickerson.
While you're up here, Zach, first of all, this is National First Responders Appreciation Day, so thank you and all of your colleagues for everything that you do for us. I saw that we had quite a representation down on Fourth Street tonight as they're having their festival. I saw the fire engine, I saw some of the police, and it's just a good thing. So thank you for doing the things that most of us don't know how to do and wouldn't do a good job of, so thank you for that.
Thank you, guys, for all your support. It really means a lot to us, so we appreciate that.
So a lot of the questions were answered that I had, but I don't know if you can disclose it, because this is kind of a... Could be kind of a culture shock when you're used to doing something a certain way and have for 30 years, and all of a sudden, things are turned upside down for a while. Was the union support overwhelming? Was it kind of close? I don't even know if you can disclose that information. I'm just kind of wondering, what did you feel within the group as far as the change?
It was a majority wanted to trial it, and we initially voted for the trial, and then when we had the memorandum of agreement, we presented all the information to the members, and the vote was still the same.
Okay. So the other thing was answered. You said this is becoming pretty common, you talked about Texas and some of this. So I'm just... Just was kind of curious, because it is a major change, and I know people who work 12-hour shifts and how that... They work so many on and so many off, and but then all of a sudden, you've got folks who've been living this way for a long time. So I'm going to guess that first month is going to be really a real test it and see how it feels, and then it may take another... How long was the trial for? I don't remember. How long were you going to do this?
Till the end of the contract.
In 2026. So next year, okay. So that's quite a length of time. I'm going to guess the first month or so is going to be kind of a... Get the feel of it, see how it all works and all of that, but it was just something different, and I just thought it would be good to discuss, and I see Chuck already pulled it off the consent agenda tonight. But again, we will see how it goes. I hope everything goes very well for all of you, and again, thank you for all that you and all the colleagues do here. Thank you.
Motion adopted.
6I, approving Skid Steer buyback for Streets Division.
Nope, 6I is the Hartland Shooting Park. That's your on L. Your on L.
Sorry. 6I, approval of Hartland Public Shooting Park Capital Project Hornaday reimbursement. Mr. McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. So Hornaday has been managing the shooting park for the last two years, and this year, like last year, we, City Council, approved some capital projects at the shooting park. This year, there's about $696,000 worth of capital projects. There's four capital projects that were approved in this year's budget out there. So last year, we did this very same thing, and it was a process that was recommended by the Finance Department Administration to kind of help things go smoothly for Hornaday, but what... Because what they were doing basically was, for example, the house, they renovated the house, they were using a lot of the Hornaday folks, they were doing, putting in the carpet, putting in windows, putting, you know, they were using some of their expertise, and so they were submitting bills directly to... Directly to the Finance Department, and then the Finance Department was reimbursing Hornaday. So this gives them... This would give... Finance requires this resolution to act in that same manner this year.
Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution 2025-367.
Mr. Lanfair.
Second.
Mr. Hossi, discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. So my question is probably more about procedure, Todd. One of the challenging things with government projects is just the hurdles you've got to go through to get a contract and the things you have to do. So when I'm reading this and you're saying we're going to allow Hornaday to manage it, and I'm not having any questions about their management of the facility, my question is, you're going to have them purchase materials and hire contractors. Will they still purchase materials and hire contractors following the city of Grand Island's purchasing agreements, the purchasing code, getting the sales tax exempt status, all of the above? I mean, are they still checking every box that we would if you were doing it?
And I don't have anybody from the Finance Department here. I don't know... I don't know if... Yeah, Pat's not here today. So I don't know if I answer that question. They work directly with the Finance Department, submit their receipts. They were getting quotes, I know, last year. I don't know that they would go through a formal bid process, because we actually have to manage a formal bid process, you know, when... If it's anything over $50,000, we actually... The city manages a formal bid process, so I don't know if I have a great answer for you, Chuck, because that's just, like I said, I'm not the Finance Department.
I'm in... You know, I'm in favor of having Hornaday do it, and my issue is all about the procedural parts, is that I don't want to go a month or two months down the road and have a request for reimbursement that has sales tax on it. I'm not going to reimburse the... You know, it's like, these are public funds, and in order to manage public funds, there are certain requirements under the state law that we have to do. And even if we let a private person do it, they still have to follow the same laws we have to follow. So there's no exemption for them to do anything other than what we have to do. It's hard for somebody in the private sector to follow government rules, you know, and as I'm sure our legal staff can tell you, they review all the contracts, they review all these things prior to you going out and saying, yeah, let's go ahead and do this. I think it's a challenge, and I just want to make sure that we're all up to the challenge and everybody understands, you still got to follow all the government procurement rules in order to be reimbursed.
I totally agree. I would say that...
Okay.
I would say that, like I said, the Finance Department would handle that, and if they have any, you know, follow-up, maybe they could follow up with you, but...
Okay. But that was it, Todd. Thank you.
Please vote.
6R, approving golf management contract.
Thank you, Mayor. So Landscapes Unlimited has been managing the golf course for the last five years, and so we have had a five-year agreement, so that agreement was coming to an end, and so we did go back out for an RFP, just like we did five years ago, and we got a great proposal from Landscapes again. They have had a great track record managing the golf course, and so basically, we are happy to recommend, or Landscapes Unlimited, for another five years.
Mr. O'Neil.
I move that we approve 2025-376.
Mr. Lanfair. Mr. Hossi.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So, Todd, five years ago, when we went through the RFP process, five years ago, one of the things that we wanted to do was to try to get the golf course operating on a break-even basis. They don't need to make any money, we just want to see if they can operate the facility at a kind of a break-even point. That was kind of the goal of the contract, the first five-year contract, and that, I think there was a three-year window that they had to look, you know, be so far towards that goal. And as I looked at this contract, I didn't see any... Anything of that nature. So the question is, is how successful were we in the first five years of getting at a revenue-neutral or break-even basis, and what are our goals in the next five years?
So good questions. The, you know, the golf course has made some... And I know the golf course staffs here, and I know they probably can have numbers more readily available. The golf course, you know, from a grand, you know, scheme operator is not a... Is not a moneymaker today. I know that they've made some great strides, and again, I think Sedana and Justin and staff can probably talk more to, you know, to the growth that they've had as far as rounds and revenue and that type of thing, and some of their projections for the next five years. I would honestly probably defer to those folks to give some projections, but again, the city, you know, and I'll tell you, from a Parks and Rec standpoint, you know, not all Parks and Recreation facilities are going to make money, they're not going to be moneymakers, but we want to try to keep that gap as small as we can, and if we can get to, you know, a positive cash flow, that's even better. So I think we're offering a great product, you know, product right now with the golf course, but again, I think that's probably the biggest goal and probably, you know, I don't know that we're actually, you know, demanding a cash flow at this point.
Well, I think, you know, I'll just try to go back 45 years ago when the golf course first came in in the 70s. I think we operated for most of those years on a break-even basis, and when we made a little bit of money, we were able to reinvest the excess into the... We never took any money out of it. We were able to reinvest the excess into whatever capital improvements they wanted to make, whether they wanted to add a sand trap or whatever they were doing. And then I think prior to Landscapes being here, in the five years ago, we had some capital projects that really cost money, and then we also had about a decade, I would say, that we were trickling out money. And then we had some capital projects, I think maybe around $300,000, and so we had to put in, inject a lot of tax money into making the thing work. So the goal here was to... Can we get it back exclusive of maybe capital projects? Can you tell me what the subsidy is, the tax subsidy is, to make it break-even for last year, for next year? I mean, can you give me any... Where we're at and how much... Where we're close to that, or... Because I think we have operated on a break-even basis most of the last 40 years now, but for a capital... Major capital projects that are unforeseeable, I think, by most people's standards. Are we there? You know, how close are we?
Well, I... I mean, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me today, and I probably... We should have probably pulled those for you, Chuck, but I know that we were operating at about a $60,000-a-year deficit. It's probably a... It's probably a pretty close number. Again, you know, I... And I could maybe defer to the Landscapes folks, just because they're dealing with that day-to-day. They could probably give you some better numbers of where we're at today, but I don't have that in front of me.
And I'm supportive of the contract, and I'm supportive of Landscapes. I just want to know where we're going for the next five years, so I can have a plan that I know that we're either going to be at a break-even, or maybe we're going to need to subsidize $60,000 a year. In the subsidy business, we used to have to subsidize youth. All youth activities didn't... Never paid for themselves, but adult activities generally did. And so that was the difference, Todd, I would say, over the years, is that we have always subsidized youth activities. Adult activities, we've actually tried to make them break-even, and that was kind of like the difference in the... Between the water park, for example. So if anybody wants to address it at all, or...
I think this gentleman here does. Sir, if you wish to respond, please state your name when you get to the microphones.
Thanks, Todd. My name is Justin Arlt, and I'm with Landscapes Golf Management out of Lincoln, Nebraska. Would love to entertain answering Councilman's question there. The last five years, essentially, the high-water mark for a cash infusion was 125,000. The low infusion was zero. So we're under about 100,000 average over our previous five years managing. However, one key element that's very impactful is we now have a capital fleet program, and that capital fleet program for the majority of the agronomy equipment, golf cars, and high-level expenses are now in the budget and expensed, and they are paid for through operations to a substantial amount. So in my opinion, if you compare what we did the last five years, and by the way, that's just the foundation, we feel like we can do better, and we will do better in this next five years, it's substantially better than the previous five years of information we were able to evaluate, compare and contrast. And if we wanted to take a deeper dive, we certainly would be more than welcome to furnish some more information for everybody to digest as needed.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
6S, approving Venue Works Hartland Event Center Operations Funding Request. Harwater, good evening.
Mayor Steele, councilmembers. Glad to be here. Are there specific questions you'd like me to answer, or how would we like to address this?
Why don't you just give us an overview of what you're asking for, if that's okay?
We were actually asking for the support payment of $200,000 as part of the occupancy tax, the annual $500,000 occupancy tax that has gone to the event center historically and going forward.
Thank you, sir. I see we have a motion by Mr. O'Neil. Please proceed, Mr. O'Neil.
I move that we approve 2025-377.
And Mr. Hossi.
I'll second that motion.
And discussion by Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. So Kyler, thank you for bringing this forward, but what we... I was just looking at your letter, and it shows that in the first... In the operating year-to-date actual, we're down about $665,000. Now, the city is contributing $500,000 through the lodging tax to help support that. What's the plan on that... On that delta, the gap between the 665 and the 500, because somebody's money is that other 165,000?
And the summary is, it's not as good as we would like. I mean, the goal was to break even with that 500,000 in support. We're going to fall a little bit short of that this year. There are a lot of reasons. You've heard me spiel about several of them, you know, with some unexpected expenses, and along with that, you know, when the freezer went down, we lost an amount of food and things like that. So there have been some losses that were certainly unanticipated. But we also were working from an original budget that was best guess, to a degree, based on some of our other facilities, and we really didn't have a history here on the ATC and what it could and couldn't do, and with our management style and the way we kind of drive the business. So there were a lot of unknowns on the front end, but I think we will end up a little short from where we really were hoping to be, and right now, that variance is about, what, 200 or about 100 and change?
165.
Thank you. It's changing, and I wish I had some wonderful news to say we're going to clean that up, but unfortunately, the state fair came in a little softer than what I had planned as far as, you know, that's four straight concerts in an arena. as far as, you know, that's, that's four straight concerts in an arena and 10 days of events going on in the arena. We anticipated that to be a pretty strong return on our investment, especially in the food and beverage side of things. But I've got a couple little interesting tidbits just to share. So when I talk about we didn't really expect to see the type of return that we did on that kind of profit range, it was, it was surprising to a degree that, I think we were all a little bit floored. But just to give you some examples, when we do a concert or an event, it's real common to have a $15 to $30 per cap, you know, per person that comes in, that's how much you make on it. For the Matthew West concert, which was our highest-selling food and beverage night, the average was $4.40 per cap, which is about a bottle of water per. So it was not a really heavy crowd, but that was our highest sales as far as actual food and beverage revenue goes. On the Righteous Brothers, a sellout crowd, our per cap was $1.74. So put in that perspective, we didn't plan on that. At the low end, we anticipated $10, that's kind of that low-end threshold. It just wasn't quite returning the way that we planned. On, for the Craft Show, we sold $16.50 worth of food for the two days of Craft Show. And those were kind of the ones that really just jumped out. Ironically, the Marshall Tucker Band, which didn't sell that well, it was probably 1,200 in attendance, the per caps for the Marshall Tucker Band were $13.33. So we actually did better on one that was poor, poorly attended versus the Righteous Brothers, which was packed. And I do have a theory on that, too, about the Righteous Brothers. It's the first concert I've ever done that's at 2:00 in the afternoon. So I think I'm, I'm actually aggressively looking at some other options to try to target that, that older demographic and have an afternoon concert that we wouldn't necessarily go after in, in, in traditional kind of concert. The pattern is not typically to have a 2:00, 2:00 p.m. concert. But seeing that turnout, what I want to find out now is, was that a result of the State Fair and everybody being in town? Or is it something that the older, the older folks in town actually want to see some afternoon-type concerts? We didn't make a whole lot of money on the food and beverage, but it was a great show, a great show for the community, and it was really fun to watch. I mean, it was surprisingly fun to watch. So I think those are some of the things that feed into that. And like I say, I wish I had some magic to say, hey, we can fix it this year, we can't. But what I do want to do is speak a little bit of the magic, which I think is really the main reason that they brought VenueWorks in. And I'll just run through these, because, you know, a lot of the attention has been focused on the ice hockey rink, are you gonna get ice? Are we gonna do this? And I think a lot of the other things have been missed, but between now and the end of March, May, May roughly, we have 10 new confirmed events and/or concerts that are confirmed and actually going to happen in addition to what everything else is at the AGC has been. So we're still having Globetrotters, we're still having Cheer and Dance, we're still having Heartland Hoops and all those sort of things. But these 10 are in addition to what we have done before. And, and the history that I've seen, they've averaged about one to four concerts a year at the AGC prior to this. In this seven-month span, we have a total of 10 new events, and I'll just run through them real quick. December 13th, we have Lone Star and Colin, Lone Star and Colin Ray Christmas Show. December 16th, we have Lindsey Stirling Christmas Show. No one should miss this show, I'm telling you, tell everyone, it's a, it's a fantastic show. January 31st, we have Scotty McCreery. January 17th, we have a confirmed motorsports event that I can't tell you yet. Just, this really isn't announced yet, but I can tell you, between February 4th and 7th, we have an indoor demolition derby. The place that I came from was the Storm of Ellis Event Center in Topeka, and during this four-day demolition derby indoor, they literally sold two semi-load trucks worth of Bush Light beer. Let's not count another food and another beer, two semi-trucks of Bush Light beer. We're bringing the Cornhusker Chaos, which has been an outdoor event in Buffalo County, I believe, here to an indoor event. And there's something about the indoor event that just, it's a crazy time. And 85% of the revenue that comes in from that particular event is from out of state, from Canada to California. So that's one of those events. Then we have, on the 12th of February, we have Three Dog Night, Ambrosia and John Ford Cooley. March 3rd, we have N. Munsek that we've confirmed. I wish I could tell you about this one, but I can't say the name yet, but on March 7th, we've confirmed a pro-sports event that will be well-received by this community. On Saturday, the 27th, we have another concert that we've confirmed, another good one, that we'll announce really soon. In April, and the last one that we have confirmed is another pro-sports announcement that will have a total of, of four events associated with that. So these are 10 brand-new events that we've not seen here before. Sales are fairly strong on some, I'd like to see it go up quicker, and hopefully that will change pretty quickly. But the real summary of all this rambling is, it's not necessarily that I'm concerned about our, our ability to bring in revenue and manage the money to a point of, of break-even slash profitability. It's a, it's really an issue of cash flow. And what we've done personally, and Chelsea's my, our Director of Finance, but our whole team, we're a team of six people, basically, and we have intentionally opted not to hire some of the staff, like a Director of Marketing, I've been kind of covering that piece, and using Spencer for some of the assistance. And we've intentionally not hired to try to offset some of that loss based on some of the challenges we've had in our first year. So we're doing everything on our end to kind of keep those costs low, just like you would do for a personal, personal budget, you know? Honey, don't spend as much this week at, at Dillard's, you know? Or actually speaking to me, probably. But we've done our best to keep the costs low and the labor where we can. But, but some of the early losses with F&amp;B losses and the food losses and some of the unexpected expenses really hit us pretty hard. So we figured that the State Fair would help us recover, but we didn't reap quite the benefit we thought we would.
Okay, well, thank you, Kyler. I, I have absolutely noticed the additional concerts and the initial events. So I think that, that has been a great improvement to the community, so I think that's been doing well. From what's on our agenda tonight, it's the 200,000 plus 30,000 a month for the next 10 months. So this is the only time in the next, this year, that you will be in front of the council for this kind of purpose. And so this is my one time in the year that I have an opportunity to talk about it as a council member. And so I wanted to just kind of bring it up, because there is a delta that we're trying to cover. And, and what I don't want to do is, what I'd like to probably see is, I'd like to probably see some updates throughout the year, how we, how are we doing? And, you know, I don't know what format that comes, but if, if somehow we could see how we're doing, because I don't want to go down the road another year and say, well, we have a $330,000 delta, what do we do? That's where I'm just, this is the opportunity to say, what's the plan? I've heard your plan, I, I love the concerts, so I look forward to every, all the things you're bringing to the community, Kyler, so thank you very much.
Mr. Nickerson?
I find it interesting to hear your analysis on everything that's happened, so I think it's, it's good that you're into the weeds on that to understand what's going on. And I agree, this first year is kind of a, it's just a trial by error, you gotta, you gotta just guess. So it's exactly guess-me. So I understand that, so you know, you've got many, many months under your belt. The two things that really drive your revenue, you indicated, is the attendance to the events, and then, of course, food and beverage, those are two big things. And you stated you've had some disappointment in the turnout at some of the events. Those events that occur during the State Fair, are those events recruited by the State Fair, or is it in conjunction with you and the State Fair as you're looking for, for these events to come in through the State Fair period?
State Fair recruits those on their own.
Yeah, so it seems to me, I've always been probably more disappointed than not, and I'm guilty because I don't attend events, that's just not something I do. But I'm, I've always been disappointed by the turnout of a lot of events that we do have here. Because, and these are some good-named stars that come in, and I, and I've always been surprised, they're not sold out, I mean, these type of things, you just think, when you only have, what, 7,000 seats or something in an, in arena like that?
Max it out, we can get close to seven, but typically, if sellout's about 54 to 5,500.
Yeah, you just think that the area that we pull from, and these events, unless they're happening within 100 miles or 200 miles of us, you would think that they would draw people in, people that like to go to events like that. When we look at what the State Fair's trying to recruit, do you see that becoming more of a joint venture on, to where you say, let's see what, those that people really want? I know, I know the State Fair's trying to guess what people really want, you're trying to guess what people really want. Understanding what they really want, I'm not sure how we get to that point, because you want those events to where they will hit that 4,000, 5,000 mark, because they happen once a year here, once over, once every many years. And you just think you would draw bigger crowds. So I'm just kind of curious your thoughts on that. How do you, how do you, how do you do that process? Because you're also talking about the marketing part of it.
Well, it's a, it's, it's kind of like forecasting, and, you know, if you could ever figure out exactly the real recipe, we'd all be beyond wealthy, it's just, it's really challenging. And when you take into consideration, we have a population of roughly 55,000 here. So if we have 5,500 people in our arena, that means 10% of our population had to turn out for that concert to fill the house, just based on Grand Island demographics. So the real takeaway there from a marketing perspective is, how do we get Carney? How do we get the students out of Carney to come here instead of waiting for something to come to the Viero Center, for example? Same with Hastings, you know, how do we get them to pay attention to what we're promoting here? And a lot of that does have to do with some of the overall marketing efforts to get people to make sure they're aware of the events, you know? That younger demographic, they're not watching TV anymore. My kids make fun of me that I still watch TV. They don't watch TV, they watch their phones, social media, and TikTok and everything else. So finding those little ins to that particular demographic is a big key. Another big key is Lindsey Stirling's a big victory for our town. You know, there's only 23 stops, and we are, the names on the list are Vegas, Houston, Colorado Springs, and Grand Island, Nebraska. Getting that kind of talent can pull people, people will come from Omaha to see Lindsey Stirling's Christmas Show, it's fantastic, it's a, it's a big draw.
How are those sales going so far?
I think we're at 1,700 sales right now against 5,500, so it's pretty strong. We, and part of that flows with the marketing, you know, when we make an announcement, an on-sale announcement, you'll see a big spike right off the bat, then you'll see it feather down again. We are timing our next round of marketing to target the Black Friday, that kind of window of time when people will be home for the holidays, so you'll see another spike in sales then. Then you'll see it drop down, and then about two weeks prior to, Lindsey Stirling will do another marketing push, and you'll see that third push. So there's these little peaks and valleys of, of how you market and how you get it out there. So it's an art, it's a lot of fun, it's really stressful at times, and, and you can't always crack the code. But we have, we have a good, young staff that, that runs things. And just to give you one more example about how we turn a potentially, quote, "bad" show into a good one, for Kansas, we undersold that. It wasn't sold as near as what we thought it would sell. We sold about 1,200 tickets. So our team instantly grabbed, went into kind of crisis mode, and okay, because now we have to worry about an empty building for a show, and it's just not a good, and it's just not a great show. So everybody, all of our six employees really figured out how to condense the, the crowd down. We took floor-to-ceiling curtains and kind of moved them in, literally had to take people that were, had seats over here, give them new seats, day-of show, move them inside, and you kind of pressed them in, kind of like what we do in church sometimes, you know, everybody come forward. And, and I, I bring that up because, being disappointed with the turnout from that show, after the show, Ronnie Platt, the lead singer of Kansas, was walking by and grabbed me and said, man, what a great show, the crowd was out there, they were, they were so alive and alert, and it was just packed out there, what a great show. So Ronnie Platt walked away from here going, what a great place to play, I had a great time, it was a great responsive crowd, and it was a terrible show as far as attendance numbers go. So some of those things we do to fix that particular concert, but it bleeds into the promoters. Now, he goes out and tells his promoter, what a great show, other promoters start going, oh, Grand Island's pretty cool, we can go there. So that word of mouth starts to spread. So all those extra efforts that really aren't necessary to change the revenue numbers during that Kansas show are necessary as part of our marketing plan to build throughout the promoter network, so.
Well, I, I just, again, I've just been disappointed in the results. Again, I'm guilty because I don't go, so you're not getting my dollar. You may get my dollar for this Lindsey Stirling, though, it sounds like I will probably be putting my name in the hat for that one. But it just seems like if, if there's some kind of collaboration between the State Fair and you, when you're trying, because they're handing you an event, it's like, here you go, and you don't know whether they're, their name might be recognizable, but it's like, it's your baby now, we've got them in here. It, it just seems like it'd be nice if there was a joint effort saying, kind of, let's work together on what can we bring into the State Fair that we all think is going to be good, and just see how that success goes, instead of having this group over here working to let you run, you know, you get to manage the event, but they're picking the names. It'd just be nice to see some kind of synergy there where that would help on those, those days. What's also seems odd is that the State Fair was the, one of the best weather state fairs we've had that I can remember in forever, and you would just think, although attendance was good at the fair, that wasn't good at the events. So we gotta have the things that people want to go to, and I know that's exactly what, what your goal is. But I think I will probably be looking at tickets for Lindsey Stirling. I think you got me convinced that, that I'm gonna be-
This is not me being biased, saying, yeah, definitely be at Lindsey, it's a great, it's a show that nor, normally doesn't come to a town of our size.
Yeah, and I would encourage everybody that, you know, that's watching tonight and that may hear about this, that of course, we need to support the event center. Don't follow my examples just because I'm kind of an old, boring guy, but the rest of you aren't boring.
I'm gonna add this to, Carly Schultz and Jamie Parr over at the State Fair, we have a good working relationship, we talk to them quite a bit. We do bounce ideas off each other, so we are working on that kind of good working relationship to do that. And I want to make sure that I, I bring this up, too, it's not just they brought in events, Matthew West and the Righteous Brothers sold great, it was just not a heavy food crowd. But involved in that, too, is that the State Fair is going on outside. So you can either go into the arena and grab a hamburger, or you can go out and get a fried Twinkie or something else. And we made the decision this year to allow them to bring food into the event center because it wasn't pre-told, they weren't pre-warned that they couldn't bring their food in. So I think that probably has a little bit of an impact on the, the food and beverage sales. But on our end, something that we can do better is, it's State Fair time, we shouldn't just be selling hamburgers and hot dogs, we should be selling a State Fair, we should have some special food and special beverages built to make that a viable option, instead of grabbing that corn dog as they're coming in, wait, and let's get that super, our food and beverage guy, Luke Fairbanks, created this hamburger that had literally every kind of meat on it, you could thank and cheese for our skating event. It was a great, it was a, it felt like a heartburn on a plate, for sure, but it was something special for that event. I think we can do a better job of becoming more of the, a part of the State Fair instead of just saying, hey, it didn't sell well, so.
Mr. Sherd?
Thank you. Boy, you said a lot that I could comment on about marketing, that's kind of, it's kind of a jam. And having worked on marketing concerts in that building for the State Fair, there's a lot that goes into that. So I do want you to be biased, I want you to tell everybody it's the greatest show, I don't care who it is, please be biased and, and get people there. Little history, just so you know, the older Nebraskans show is never going to sell a lot of beer, it's always gonna be at 2:00. And people will come from all over that day, because the whole fairgrounds is older Nebraskans that day. It's the cheapest show they put on, the tickets are the cheapest, it's a thank you. So I was surprised it was a dollar each. They line up, they sit down, they watch the show, and they leave. And then, you're not gonna sell a lot of beer at the Christian show, right? Like, you probably already know that by now. My question is, on the shows throughout the year, do you see making incremental revenue over time? You're adding lots of shows. I'm with Chuck. Man, every time you announce a show, I'm impressed. Just, not just in the quality, but the, the number and the variety, it's been great. Do you see yourself just chipping away and making incrementally a little bit more here and there to make this up? And if so, is it the number of shows going to do that? And is there a tipping point of Mitch can't get everybody to be there every time? You know, you say 5,000 people, well, that's only 10% of our, but I ain't going 10 times, 12 times, 14 times. So what is, what is your thoughts on that?
No, there's a lot in there, even to unpack all of that. You know, the answer is yes, we do believe that we're going to add incremental improvements to the revenue for a lot of different reasons. One is, you know, by all of, by having all of these announcements, and as you know, we, we target them to come out on certain days and to time out with the on-sale dates and things like that, but the more that we have, the more we're giving the general population a reason to go check our website. If we're only having one concert a year, or two concerts a year in State Fair, they might check it around State Fair time and here and there, but they're not actively thinking, oh, let's see if there's a concert going on at the event center. Now, when they're seeing all these concerts, if they're sitting around on a Saturday and they're going, I wonder if they got anything at the event center? Odds are pretty darn good, there's something at the event center. So you're almost mentally retraining people to actually use the event center website as a resource for, what am I gonna do on Saturday night? We have those kind of options now. So in the long term, I think that will generate more attention to the website, which will generate more attention naturally for people to understand what concert's going on. The other thing is, we can get better. You know, we have four individual concession stands in our, in our building. One of them has all, everybody's seen that plastic that they had on the gate. It's covered it for the last, I think, forever for the most part. It's never been open, but that's where we bought the new fryer and the grill and a lot of the food prep to actually create food there. Instead of being pre and warmed up, you know, we can actually cook food now. That hasn't been opened yet, and it is a physiological fact that when you smell a burger cooking, the odds of you buying that burger just way up. When you don't smell it, you'll just walk right on by. So, even making that little subtle change of them walking through the concourse going, something smells really good. I'm a sucker to that. I know that. That's, that's another place that we can change. Plus, getting better with the service and as people get used to the fact that we put bars out and then our grab-and-go stations and our concession stands, there really is no reason for people to walk away because they were in line for 20 minutes. They're usually getting their food within three to seven minutes. So, those things will grow as we continue to grow the business.
Very good. I, I look forward to seeing more of what you're doing, and hopefully, I agree with Chuck. I'd like to see maybe quarterly, we can arrange it for you to come and give an update on how close we are at chipping away at that and also build a little bit more excitement for some of the shows.
I'd love to.
Pro sports, man. I want, I want to hear more about that. If it's what you were hinting at when you talked to me a while ago, then I'm excited.
I, I really wanted to tell you a couple of them tonight, but I can't yet, so. But there's some exciting news that's coming up.
Very good. Well, thank you for the variety and thanks for coming and sharing.
Motion adopted.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Resolution 7A, approving amendment number three to engineering consulting services for State Street Deere's Avenue improvements. Mr. Kurtz.
Good evening. Tonight before you is a resolution to amend our engineering contract. This is for State Street, essentially from Claude Road to Webb Road. We're looking for additional topo survey, final design. A good share of this is right-of-way negotiations, getting necessary easements and, and right-of-way that we need for the project. Again, you guys on South Locust probably recall how many different parcels we had to go through to acquire to build that road and some public involvement. The proposed contract amendment is $310,800.
Motion, Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I move that we approve item 7A.
Mr. Brown.
I second that motion.
Mr. Sheard, discussion.
Thank you. I think this is the, we've, we've talked about this a lot. I'm excited about it. The one thing that I will implore you on this one, and I've, we've talked about it before, is just over-communicating with everybody involved about what it's going to be throughout the process. Can you identify some of those right-of-ways that you're talking about needing to purchase?
So, this map I have doesn't specifically show exactly what right-of-way we're looking at, but I can assure you that we're going to need temporary easements and some permanent easements along the corridor. One of the major things I wanted to speak about too is just the extent of the project. So, earlier during budget season, we had talked about a budget for this whole project of approximately $2 million. As we got further into design, a couple of things kind of came to light. One, as you can see, we're, we're addressing east of 281. Originally, we were not totally anticipating that, but once we get further into design, one, State Street is the only major road east of 281, other than Fayettely, which hasn't been expanded yet, that doesn't have a median in the middle of the road. We're putting a median on the, on the west side of the road. We kind of need to align those things up. There's some storm sewer culvert work on the 281 ditch that came to light during the flooding this spring that we need to address, so we need to tear that up anyway. It kind of made for a, I don't know if I want to say perfect situation, but we felt like we needed to address that at this time and made sense. So, the overall project budget has grown since what we proposed earlier this budget season. With that being said, we're anticipating Locust Street maybe going a little slower and stretching into fiscal year '27. So, I, I think most of the funds will be there. We'll just have to shift them around. But I wanted to make you aware that the extent of the project has, has went up from the original $2 million budget to almost four. The other thing that we need to address or that we're looking to address is originally we kind of thought maybe we could salvage some of the paving out here and add some of the medians without disturbing everything. There's a lot of ASR, which is concrete degradation based on the materials used in the concrete. And so, again, when we start looking at replacing some of the panels or part of the roadway, does it really make sense to, to do it all if we're going to disrupt everything? So, that's kind of adding to it as well. Again, I just wanted to make you guys aware that this scope has changed a little bit in that regard. Overall, you know, hopefully, we'll get the majority of the work done this fiscal year. It will stretch into '27 as well. But again, everyone along here in some way will be affected with temporary easements at a minimum. Again, part of this amendment is to meet with individual property owners affected directly by the corridor. We've also started talking about how do we get the word out to people beyond, just right on the roadway, you know, whether it be websites, press releases, those kind of things to make them aware that people will have to get to different businesses differently for a while while we're working on the area. So, all of those things are being considered throughout this process.
Good. I bring up South Locust. I've had some folks that work down there, and I think this message has probably gotten to you, that it hasn't gone for those businesses as well as maybe we were anticipating. I just don't want to see that here, and some of these are going to be not temporarily changed, but permanently changed, as is the case with, say, Wendy's and, and that Taco Bell.
Yes.
Access is going to change permanently. So, just being very, very clear and open on the process and the long-term vision.
Yeah, some of the, the access, like you're, you're saying, is, is true. We're going to, we're going to affect the patterns. The, the construction process is a different thing. You know, on South Locust, there were some factors on that as far as there were some weather delays, we had some water main issues. You know, there's always, unfortunately, something that we try to anticipate as good as we can that kind of goes a different way. So, yeah, all of those things are, are brought into the picture when we look at a project like this.
Is that trail going to extend full width across there? It kind of does now, but like in front, all the way down to almost McDonald's, is that going to be trail width or just sidewalk?
So, that, we're not looking at anticipating any changes beyond the bank here on the corner. Everything west of there will essentially remain the same as what it is today.
I go through that intersection twice a day usually. I've been shocked, not that one, the, the 281.
Oh, yeah.
That one. I've been shocked at how much I see people walking across there as pedestrians has grown extremely high compared to what it was even five years ago. And I think as we now have walking distance to a target there, that's just something to keep in mind, and the amount of foot traffic from over west of there coming through.
So, as you can see, we're setting it up for crosswalks, which the one currently does exist today. Some of them don't have access to other sidewalks on the, all of that would be improved with all of these projects. 13th Street, which was on the consent agenda, similar situation. We're going to improve those as well for that very reason. We know people are using all of these crossings more than, more than ever.
Thank you.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
7B, approving bid award for Island Oasis Water Park Improvements. Mr. McCoy.
Thank you, Mayor. So, a couple of years ago, we did a facility evaluation and master plan at Island Oasis. Council probably recalls it, the council members that, that have been here. The results from that master plan, we put together a concept to remodel the water park. That concept included a new wave pool, leisure pool, remodeling the bathhouse, remodeling the concessions, a new splash pad area, and a mini golf area. So, again, we budgeted this year to make that project a reality. So, we did go out for bids. We did receive two bids. The low bid came from Sheil Caton of Lincoln, Nebraska. Their, their bid was $13,196,720, and we recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Mr. O'Neill.
I move that we approve 2025-379.
Mr. Nickerson.
I second the motion.
Discussion, Mr. Nickerson.
Sure. So, Todd, is this the project that was being anticipated to be around $15 million? And so, we've really seen a, a nice improvement on that.
We got good price, we got really good prices. We were very happy. It was, we actually budgeted $15.9 million, being very conservative. You know, this is about $13.2 million that we're awarding today. I mean, we do understand there will be some contingency there. There'll probably be some, some things that come up or whatever, but we did get very good numbers.
Very pleasant surprise. Do you still think this could be on track to be completed by next season?
No. So, it's going to slide. It's, it's going to be an 18-month project, so what we're, they're going to get started. We're kind of leaving it up to the contractor just a little bit, but so one thing they could do is the mini golf right-of-way and the splash pad and then leave the pool alone. One of the things that we are requiring them to do is not impact the swimming this next summer, so we will have swimming next summer. So, they could, in theory, renovate the wave pool and then get that done and have a new wave pool. We're going to leave that up to the contractor a little bit, but our requirement of them is to have it completely done before the 2028 season. So, we'll see some work this, this, this year already, but it, it won't be complete.
But the mini golf will be a priority, it sounds like.
It'll, it'll be a priority. Again, we're going to leave it up to the contractor a little bit, so we'll, we'll, we will have the mini golf by 2028 for sure, or this summer. So, it'll, we'll see how it goes.
Very good. All right. Well, pleasant surprise. Thank you.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Ordinance 8A, consideration of amending Grand Island City Code sections 2-18 and 2-21 relative to city council and mayor compensation. Let's start off first, is there a motion to suspend the statutory rules regarding ordinances? Mr. Hossi.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to suspend the statutory rules.
Mr. O'Neill.
I second the motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Mr. Schmidt, please present.
Thank you. So, the ordinance in front of you would adjust, is a proposal to adjust council pay. Grand Island City Code Chapter 2 addresses council pay and mayor pay. The last adjustment was back in 2014 when it was set at $7,800 for council. We did a survey of the non-union group, and when we do that, we include council and, and mayor classifications. And based on the survey results, we're not recommending a change to the mayor compensation. That appears to be in line, but we are recommending a adjustment to council pay. And if we go to the midpoint of the survey results, that would be $10,390. Along with that, we would suggest a CPI similar to what we did with the non-union group this year of 3%. That would bring the annual number to $10,701. And with the proposed change, that would take effect, that'd be effective with the seating of the next city council. And along with that, we would also recommend that the CPI be an ongoing item in, in that. So, rather than need to make adjustments ad hoc, we could, we could build in that CPI factor. Now, of course, we'll still do non-union surveys, and if there, if there's a disparagement there, we can address that at that time, but at least building in the CPI factor so that the, that number adjusts. So, we would do that every two years. So, say, for example, the years one and two, we did non-union 3% each year. Then that second year, we would adjust that. We wouldn't adjust the first year for council, but that second year to go along with that seating, we would do, we'd factor in 6% increase. Same idea for the mayor's, just over, same idea, but four-year period. So, that's the proposal in front of you.
Thank you. Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I move that we approve item 8A.
Mr. O'Neill.
I second the motion.
Mr. Hossi, discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Having sat on the council a long time, you know, we've been, this will be 12 years between the, the last two times, and between December of 2001 and December of 2012, there was another 11-year stretch where, where actually nothing happened. Personally, I think that there, one of the two things is right. You know, none, none of the towns in our array do nothing, pay the council nothing. But in the community, I think, one of the two things, either you pay the council something that attracts talent, the talent, same talent we're missing, you know, looking for in, in our organization, we need the same talent on the council. You know, the school board has zero pay, you know, and other, I think zero pay would get you talent. I think zero pay would, only people who want to serve, have a desire to serve, would serve. Or I think in, in the case of all of our array, everybody does something. So, I think this is the best of, of the two choices. But I do think that conceptually, I think if you paid them nothing, paid the council nothing, you would have nothing but people who wanted to serve, and, and it does exist in Grand Island. It's, it's probably still not even half of what the county board makes, but their government's different as well, you know? And so, it's just the way the government is. But you do spend a lot of time answering constituents' calls, but the key thing for me in this vote is to, we need talent amongst these 10 people that are on this council. We need people who pick up their phones when the citizen calls. You know, we need council members who just reach out to staff and say, and help facilitate. We, we don't fix anything, but we help facilitate a lot. And almost everybody that's been on the council has some reason, some motivator, you know, for them to be here. And the motivator isn't going to be money. It's got to be some public service. It's got to be something that makes you want to be here and answer that phone and, and then pick up the call, and I'll call some city staff member or a city administrator and have them fix things. And that's, you know, I've been doing it for a long time. I just want talented people up here on the council because I think our best votes are when 10 people are engaged in the conversation.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Ordinance 8B, consideration of approving salary ordinance. Is there a motion to suspend the statutory rules? Mr. O'Neill.
I move to suspend the rules.
Mr. Brown.
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. Well, by pulling the MOU earlier, that makes this, this one easier to present, so this is just the change to the wages to reflect the MOU that you passed earlier tonight.
Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I move that we approve item 8B.
Mr. Brown.
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
8C, consideration of approving the amendment to the Grand Island Firefighters Retirement System Plan and Trust. Is there a motion? Mr. O'Neill.
I move to suspend the rules.
Mr. Lanfear. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Mr. Schmidt, please present.
Thank you. This might be the most I've ever presented at a council meeting before. This, the next two items actually reflect statutory changes to the police and fire retirement systems. The first one in, in front of you is the firefighter's retirement system, and the, the main thing it's capturing is the change in contribution rates. So, this would amend the increased contribution rates from 6.5% to 12.7% for the firefighter between 2024 and 2025. between 2024 and 2026. It increases city contributions from 13% to 15% over the same period. Thank you.
Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. I move that we approve item 8C.
Mr. Lanfair?
I second.
Mr. Hossi, discussion, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Aaron, I did look up the statutes, and this, I don't know what the motivation was other than they probably need more money in the pension bucket, but it going from 6.5%, which I think we've been at for the last dozen years or so, to 12.7%, that's a lot from the employee side, and again, from the 13% match to the 15% on the employer's side. Having worked in the private sector, if I put in 5%, my employer put in 2.5, and so this is significantly better than what my private sector employer was, but still, at the end of the day, I don't know, you know, what the calculus was with the legislature. But when I was looking at that, one of the difference between this one, the fire, and the police, the fire department used to be exempt from social security, so they weren't part of the social security system, so that's why the numbers were larger, because in social security, you contribute 7.65 and your employer contributes 7.65, you know, so the numbers on the fire department were larger because of that. Is it still that way where the fire department is not subject to social security?
Yes, sir. Correct.
So, that accounts for, you know, the larger numbers. So, I just had one question on Article 2.3 in the fire plan, and it's probably the same in the police, but I'm just going to talk about it on the fire. Article 2.3 on page 273 of the packet, on the top of the page, there were annuity, there was four checkmarks, four X's on single sum annuity, straight life annuity, a straight life annuity with a guarantee of 60 months, and annuity payable for life of the participant, and annuity to surviving beneficiary of 175 or 50 as elected by the city. The first three, I think I've seen in the fire plan for the last 40 years, so I think the first three are the same numbers we had on how we calculated, like pre-84 lump sum benefits. Do we have any or many pre-84s still in the plan?
None.
So, there's none still in the plan, so this isn't used for determining a lump sum benefit?
Correct.
So, and the number four, which I don't remember seeing before, so an annuity payable for the life of the participant, and an annuity of the surviving spouse at 175 or 50 as elected by the city, why would, why would the city elect that one? Why wouldn't the participant elect us, how he wants to take care of his spouse? I was just trying, I was a little, I was just reading the box, and I'm like, the first three I'd seen for a long, long time, but the fourth one, I was just curious as to why the city would care, because I would think it would be the participant who would like to choose how to divide and conquer for his family.
I think historically, we would just present it as the total amounts, if it was $1 million, and that was a single life annuity, and then if they elected, you know, the joint survivor, there was the lesser options. I'd be honest with you, I'm not familiar with the 75% one.
So, what used to happen is, and we'll just use simple numbers, if you would go through and you would be retirement, and you would be entitled to $1,000 a month pension, whatever that number is, you could elect to cover your spouse at 100 or 75 or 50, but if you wanted to cover your spouse at 100%, your pension now was $900. If you wanted to cover her at 75%, it was 925. You know, so your monthly pension went down based on what you opted as the employee, what the participant opted, his annuity would go down based on the amount of coverage he wants to cover. So, it was by the, when it says elected by the city, I don't know that the city, I was trying to figure out why would the city care at this point? This is purely, this is their money, this is whatever, however they want to choose.
Right, and I guess probably overlooked it because it's a mute point, all the police and fire pre-84s are no longer with us.
This is all about them. I would assume that this really, we would let them elect whatever they wanted to elect, if they wanted to cover their spouse at 50% or...
Mrs. Nahnhoff?
So, we have to have the pre-84 language in there, even if we don't actually have any pre-84 hires, because by state law, you have to have those covered, so even if we don't actually use it, it has to be in there.
So, what I would say is, in the last 40 years, not one person has opted for any annuity.
And they may not have, I don't know who opted for what, but it's one of those things, when they're required by law to be in there, whether you use them or not, we have to have them there.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Motion adopted.
Ordinance 8D, consideration of approving the amendment to the Grand Island Police Officers Retirement System Plan and Trust. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you. So, same...
We need to suspend the rules, I'm sorry. Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. I move that we suspend the rules.
Lanfair?
Sir?
Any discussion?
Motion adopted.
Mr. Schmidt, please present.
So, same idea with the police retirement system plan here, just updating the document, and the major thing here is the contribution going from 7% to 9%, and that became effective 10-1.
Mr. O'Neil?
I move to approve item 8D.
Pardon me. Mr. Pools, did you wish to speak on this?
Mayor, council, Gerald Pools, thank you. I just, my question was that on these, I mean, when I worked for my company, we put in a certain amount that was matched by the employer, and in reading this, it looked like they put money in, and whatever that they put in, then they get, they get that back, compensate? Do they get, it's like what they put in for a match, they get paid that, that full amount?
I'll let Mr. Schmidt respond.
Am I reading that right? I, that's, I'm just...
Which one you got in front of you?
Yeah, and this was, I mean, both of them are pretty much the same.
So, 10-1, we'll talk about that now.
And get, both of you, both of you, please speak into the microphones.
I'm sorry, and what I was looking at was the employer pickup contributions, it, to me, it looked like whatever that the city was then effectively paying the mandatory funds, and that's what I, I just wondered, because that's, that, I mean, I don't think there's anything like that in the private sector. That's what I'm looking at, that's what I'm looking at.
Sure, the pickup just talks about the tax classification, but the reality, how it's happened, employee gets their paycheck, 9% of their money came, was pulled out, put into retirement account, and then the city, the employer, puts in 9% to match.
So, that contribution is just, is put into the 401K then?
Right.
And that's, that's, because I just, I didn't quite understand that, it sounded like a very favorable arrangement, and I, I never got that. So, thank you. That clears everything up. Thank you very much.
And Mrs. Nahnhoff, if you have something to add, please proceed.
I was just going to let Mr. Pools know that that amount comes right out of Chapter 16, Section 1005 of state statute. This is beginning October 1, 2025. Each police officer shall contribute to the retirement system a sum equal to 9% of his or her salary, and prior to that, it was 7%, so these numbers are actually set by state statute.
Back to you, Mr. O'Neil?
I move we approve item 8D.
Mr. Sheard?
Thank you, I'll second.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
8E, amendment to authorize financing for solid waste improvements expansion through public markets.
Mrs. Nahnhoff? We need to suspend the rules. Mr. Hossi?
I would move to suspend the rules on ordinance number 10047.
Mr. O'Neil?
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Please proceed, Mrs. Nahnhoff.
Thank you. This ordinance is to amend the bond ask to 9.9 million that the city council had previously approved for the solid waste transfer station at 9 million. It is still a favorable rate, and finance department is asking that you increase the amount from 9 million to 9.9 million.
Thank you, Mrs. Nahnhoff. Mr. Brown?
I move we approve 10,047.
Mr. Hossi?
I second that motion.
Any discussion?
Motion adopted.
Item 9A, executive session to discuss union negotiations. Is there a motion to leave our regular meeting and reconvene in executive session? Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. I move that we move to executive concession, executive session.
Mr. O'Neil?
I second.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
We are going into executive session at 8:20 PM.